Welcome, gallery members, and welcome viewers to our Monday, June 24 regular council meeting. I would now ask council if they have any added items to our agenda. I see none, so we will move forward to the adoption of the agenda as presented. Please, an emotion. Counselor Daley?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that we accept the agenda for our regular enclosed council meeting for Monday, June 24, 2024, at 1:00 p.m. in council chambers.
Thank you. Counselor Daley, I will call for the vote at this time. Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Moving down now to page three of your agenda, please. This is your regular council meeting minutes. I would ask council this time if you have any errors or deletions, or do you have consensus for the minutes? I believe we have consensus, so we will be... We have consensus for the minutes of June 10, 2024. Moving down now to, please, page eight of your agenda. Sorry, we have three bylaws today. So, at this time, we are going to move into our public hearing for bylaw 2024-24, the land use bylaw 1-23. So, at this time, before we move into the meeting, I will speak to the pecuniary interest for municipal councilors. Section 172 of the Municipal Government Act states that you may not take part in the discussion of decision-making on a matter in which you have a pecuniary interest. The legislation attempts to ensure that you are not discriminated either for or against by virtue of your membership of council. If you have a pecuniary interest, please, you are to disclose that you have an interest, and its general nature; you are to abstain from any discussion of matter and from voting; you are to leave the room until the matter has been dealt with, and you should make sure that your abstention is recorded in the minutes. You are not to be discriminated against and are entitled to participate in the public hearing as a member of the public. I now declare the public hearing clo... Open, please, at 1:03 p.m. And now I ask our development officer to please approach to explain the effect of the proposed bylaw. Mr. Sloan?
Thank you, Mayor, and counsel. This first proposed bylaw, the first public hearing, is for an application that we received to rezone two parcels of land from the Industrial Business District, IB, to Light Industrial, I-1. The subject parcels are at 4110 and 4250, 47th Avenue. The property is currently developed as a multi-unit industrial building, mostly on Lot 2, and outdoor storage yard on Lot 1. The properties across the street to the east are all zoned I-1, Light Industrial, but the adjacent property to the south is zoned Industrial Business, the same as the current zoning of the subject parcel. To the west is the railroad, and then 50th Avenue, and then on the west side of 50th Avenue, there is a row of country residential properties. The distance from the subject parcels to the nearest residential property is approximately 53 meters. Rezoning these properties from IB to I-1 would result in one additional permitted use and a series of discretionary uses. The permitted use that would be added is wholesale greenhouse, and the discretionary uses are ranged from feed mills and elevators to storage yards, municipal storage yards, and the rest are listed in the request for decision. Approval of this amendment would add a number of new discretionary uses possible, but as discretionary uses, council is the approval authority for any development permit application that would come forward for those. Prior to a decision being rendered on any discretionary use, adjacent property owners and those within 20 meters, the same who were circulated for this bylaw amendment, would be given notification of the application and would be able to present or submit their letters of concern for that particular development. At this point, there is no development planned that we know of, and no specific development that this rezoning application is for. Recommendation? I will get to that after the public hearing, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sloan. As we move down, before I explain the procedure, I would like to call on the gallery members and ask, is there anyone present at this public hearing that will be wishing to speak this afternoon? Thank you very much, sir. I will move forward then. I will now explain the procedure. Presentations before council shall be brief and to the point, limited to five minutes. Council shall not allow cross-examination of persons giving us information, and it will not be necessary for the persons to verify their... his or her qualifications. Council may ask questions of the speakers after each presentation for clarification purposes. No debating or questions from the floor will be allowed, and no written or verbal submissions will be received by council after the public hearing is closed. Persons addressing council will state their name and address, and indicate if they are speaking on their own behalf and/or for a client, company, and/or a citizen group. I will now call for the first time those in support of the bylaw 2024-24. Those in support? Seeing now, none. I will then move to first time for those opposed to the proposed bylaw. Thank you, sir. Please approach the podium and turn the mic on, and welcome.
I'm James Rosenberger, 4102 50th Ave. I'm just across the street from the backyard of the proposed development. I am one of the many neighbors along that street that, in discussions, were opposed to any development changes to upgrade to industrial. We've had in the past where this property is operated as a junkyard, car demolition place, very noisy all hours of the evening. We had... We were here last time to discuss that. The concern that I have, and the neighbors that along that street have as well, are with relation to noise and unsightly premises. So, the noise being the chief one, so feed mills, some of that stuff, any discretionary uses beyond, as it turns to industrial, if it moves out of business, it just ups the ante of what you can put on that property. We have some nice tranquil acreages, and I think they're an asset to the town. By putting an industrial... allowing industrial development across our front yards, not just decreases property value, but quality of presence there as well. And so, there's no... At present, there's no sound barriers. There's a partial fence for covering, for screening, but no sound barriers. So, if something like this goes forward, our concern, my concern, is that we have a new threshold for noise, industrial, to be able to run at all hours, right straight across from a residential property for acreages. Should things go forward anyway, if it does get approved, my recommendation, my encouragement would be for a, you know, a proper 10-foot-high sound fence that would serve both purposes attached to any development for that. Not opposed to development, but the noise that we experienced, unsightly premises as well that we experienced was substantial. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Would you be able to leave your notes with...
It's in there.
Okay, thank you very much.
It's in the... My letter's in the package.
Good. It's the same letter. There, it's very good. Thank you, sir. I will now ask a second time, are there others that are opposed? Seeing none, I will ask for the first time, are there any persons in the gallery that are deemed to be affected? Oh, sorry. Would you like to speak, Mr. Sloan? There is one gentleman that did state he was deemed to be affected.
There's... ...opposition. Okay, well, we'll go to the deemed affected and come back to you then. Thank you.
Hello, very...
Okay, so we'll go back to the opposed then. Go ahead, Mr. Sloan.
Thank you again, and I'm sorry for the confusion. We did receive four letters of opposition to the proposed bylaw. Two of them are in the agenda package, and two came in late, so I will read those into the public record. The first letter that we received is from Shirley Shukinik at 4202 50th Avenue. "I would like to veto the plan to change the zoning from commercial to industrial, the reason being it could cause a lot of noise and pollution. I would prefer to keep the industrial area at the south end of town where it won't interfere with residents." Thank you. Then the next letter I have is from Leona McDougall at 4106 50th Avenue. "Good afternoon, Mayor and counsel, and other attendees. It is unfortunate that I cannot attend this meeting, but I have a new job and could not take time off. But I am very opposed to this proposal. There is no indication as to what is being planned for this area. It opens up a number of concerns in regards to the types of industry that would not be appropriate in an area where residential homes are in the near vicinity. A partial list of those concerns would be the additional noise created, as well as ground pollution from contaminants, both which have... both of which been a concern already, as well as air pollution, which many types of industry put out. Although it has been suggested that a sound barrier be put in place, they do not provide enough barrier for the type of noise that industrial businesses produce, considering the residential homes in the area being affected. And barriers cannot provide adequate coverage against contaminants such as dust, et cetera, that may affect the quality of air in the area. Please consider the residential members in this area that are not in favor of what is going on now in this area, and are definitely not in favor of it being worse if this proposal gets approved. I personally have to put up with listening to trucks in this vicinity that run all night, sitting or going in and out of the area. I put up with listening to equipment such as Bobcat going back and forth between lots in that area. I have also complained about the security lights that shine from this area through my living room and into my kitchen that create enough liquid... enough light in the night that I can see into my cupboards without turning on any of my lights in the house. There are other areas of the town that are established for industrial businesses, and I suggest that whoever is applying for this proposal relocate to a more appropriate location as others did in the past."
Thank you very much, Mr. Sloan. I believe we've called for each area. I don't believe anyone else sitting in the gallery has more to say at this point. Am I correct? Very good. I will go to my council members now and ask if any council members have any comments. Counselor Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. Just a question through you to the development officer. My apologies, I should know this, I guess, but could you just comment when we have something zoned as industrial business, IB, what those type of businesses are? The recommendation does a good job of highlighting what would be newer addition... excuse me, newer additional businesses, but could you give me a little bit of an idea on what businesses, industrial business was... industrial businesses would look like?
Yes, thank you. The Industrial Business District has a lot of overlap with the Light Industrial District. It is intended more for businesses that do have customers coming to the property more frequently than you would find in most industrial areas, such as mechanics and... I'm drawing a blank off the top of my head, but I think vet clinics are not included in industrial business. I can provide that list in the district, but essentially, it's for industrial-related businesses that are not as impactful to the surrounding area, as would be the case with Light Industrial.
Ryan, and then Counselor Daley.
Thank you, Mayor Doll, and through you too. Mr. Sloan, I'm sorry, I know you said it, but I... I'm trying to wrap my head around it. The property to the south of this business, is that light... is that industrial business as well? And then the ones across the road are industrial. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Essentially, the west side of 47th Avenue is industrial business, and the east side is Light Industrial.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Daley?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to Mr. Sloan as well. So, my question is why? You had mentioned in your presentation that there is no plans for developing this into industrial 1. Just wondering why now the application for this rezoning change?
Thank you. In speaking with the applicant, it is more a case of the building being a multi-unit building with multiple tenants and opportunities for tenancies, and the landowner feels that the Industrial... Light Industrial District opens up a larger, essentially, market for him to market any or to attain tenants in any empty units.
I'll go back to Counselor Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I don't know if it's the appropriate time or not, but I would just state, I don't think I can support this rezoning going forward. The letter's in opposition, and certainly pointing out that there are alternative options within the town, so I would just state, I don't think I could support this rezoning application.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Counselor Cummings?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question about the tenancies. So, you had mentioned, Mr. Sloan, that this was a multi-unit dwelling. If there is no further development but just a new tenant that is a Light Industrial, how do we control that as opposed to a development permit? Because I understand a development permit, we have a lot of control over that. A business license, council has no control over that. You... Your office has complete control over the issuance of a business license. So, if we prove this as a development zoning change, where there's no new development being done, there's just an industrial business going in, does that take it completely out of the hand of council and strictly into your hand, or do we get a say in that at all?
Thank you for the question. Despite... even if there is no physical construction, and in that term of development or definition of development, if the use of one of the existing days changes, that potentially triggers a change of use development permit. And if it's to... if it's changing the use of that existing space without any construction to a discretionary use that's listed in the RFD, then that would still come back to council. That development permit application would still come to council.
Thank you. I would like to ask, one of the gallery members came to speak, I believe it was James. What is the applicant prepared to do with regards to noise? Is he aware of the conditions that the residents are not happy with the idea of noise?
I have not had that conversation with the applicant this time around. Similar application did take place to rezone it, actually, to Light Industrial a few years ago, and those concerns were brought up then. In that case, there was a specific development that was proposed along with the rezoning to allow for a salvage yard, including the crushing of cars. That was refused at that time, largely because of the same concerns that are being brought up today. But since this application came in this year, I have not had those conversations with the applicant.
And the second part of that question is, in your experience as a development officer, are there scenarios where there is a type of screening that can be used with this type of development?
It does depend on what developments would come in. There are certainly sound barriers that would be effective for vehicles, Bobcats, driving across the gravel lot, but if it is a more intensive industrial development that is potentially taller than those or emits anything beyond noise, dust and particles that were mentioned, then there would be other concerns. It would be... It would be more than just noise. The sound barrier would help for that, but not so much for other particulate matter. So, administration feels that those concerns would be able to be addressed in a development permit application, that if it were deemed that there were no barriers that could impact the... or could reduce those impacts, we would likely recommend refusal.
And/or conditions? Very good. Thank you. Did you have anything, CAO? Thank you very much, and I guess while there's no further comments from council, I'll ask you then to make final comments. Mr. Sloan?
My only other comment would be related to what I just said, in that I do believe the concerns are reasonable from the applicant... or from, sorry, the affected landowners. But I also believe that those concerns can be addressed at the development permit stage, and if they can't, then we would not recommend supporting such a development that couldn't be addressed.
Well, thank you very much for sharing that today with us, Mr. Sloan. No further questions or comments at this time, so I declare the public hearing closed at 1:22 p.m. Thank you very much. We will now move forward to the bylaws. Council's heard, and we've been told by our development officer, alternatives. I would ask then for second reading of bylaw 2024-24. Counselor Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I make the motion that bylaw number 2024-24 be given second reading as presented.
Thank you very much, Counselor Wilson. I will now call for the vote. Those in favor of second reading? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you can. Sure. Go ahead. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Doll, and through you to either Mr. Sloan or through our CAO. You made mention that although the residents' concerns could be addressed during the development permit process, hypothetically speaking then, I don't like to do that, but if they applied for one of the discretionary uses and was declined by us as council or by your office, their appeal process could be launched, and during that appeal process, they could overturn our decision and grant somebody one of these discretionary businesses to be developed there, and we would have no more control over that, would we?
That's correct. The subdivision development appeal board's decision would then override.
supplemental, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Just a supplemental comment. Well, based on that, then, I don't think today I could really stand to support this as it's presented, so I want to thank you for that clarification.
And you had a comment, Counselor Cummings?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, rezoning and development processes are, and I agree with Mr. Sloan, are two different things, and we don't know, and nor can we anticipate, what the development of this property would look like in the future. I'm not going to stop a process at a point where we don't have enough information to actually be against something, because we don't know what this is. We do have the development process in place, and we do have our options there to put limits on what is put there, or to simply deny it. I understand from history that when this proposal had come by last time, it came with a development that was unsuitable for the neighbors and unsuitable for the area. If that happens again, we'll do exactly what we did last time, and that's deny that development permit at that stage. So, I don't see a reason to deny the developer... the rezoning of this to allow for opportunities in our community that could be enjoyed by everybody until we know what that is, and then that's the stage that I would disagree with it or agree with it.
Counselor Cummings, Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I just wanted to make a comment with regards to this. The properties to the east is the same zoning, and to my way of thinking, it was done... both those properties were done as a buffer to the industrial, to the heavy... to the more heavier industrial or lighter industrial, different types of uses. These were done... This was done in a zoning, and I have no idea what year it was, perhaps you and Counselor Walsh might know, but I think it was done to buffer the noise and the dust and all the concerns for the residents across the way, and I still think that that is the way it should be kept, as far as I'm concerned, so I will vote against.
Thank you. Counselor Walsh?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Ryan. You're exactly right. You know, buffers between residential and industrial is a good planning process, and I agree that this is there for that purpose. 53 meters between these properties and the residence is not that great, and whenever we actually increase the industrial areas, we look for those buffers, whether they're lesser impact on the residential. So, yes, I would not support changing the zoning in this property.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Thank you, everyone that's in the gallery and our development officer as well. So, if there's no further comments or questions, I will now call for the vote for second reading. Counselor Wilson has it on the floor. Those in favor? Those in favor that is... Those opposed? That's been denied. Thank you very much. So, we won't be going on with third reading. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We will have a couple more by... public hearings after this one. You're welcome to stay, or you're welcome to carry on for the day. Very good. Thank you. All right, now, we will move down to page 15 of your agenda, please, council members. Now, this public hearing on page 15 will be a joint public hearing in regards to bylaws 2024-25 and 2024-26. So, when I call for the public hearing to be open, it'll be joint with both bylaws. I now call the public hearing open, please, for 2024 and 2024-25 and 26. I believe I... As we have the same members in the room, my council is aware of the pecuniary interest that I've already disclosed for all council in the public hearing, and I now declare the public hearing open at 1:00 p.m. Come to the podium in status of purpose of the bylaws.
Thank you again. These bylaws were received as an application to rezone a portion of a parcel at 5631 49th Avenue from R5 Country Residential to R3 Medium Density Residential. The proposed rezoning would require an amendment to the East Olds Area Redevelopment Plan, which identifies the parcel as remaining R5 in the future. The ARP needs to be amended prior to the rezoning being approved, and that's why we have two bylaw... or bylaw numbers here. The applicant is exploring the possibility of subdividing the rear portion of the parcel to... The applicant is exploring the possibility of subdividing the rear portion of the parcel into a separate property to sell as a development opportunity for Medium Density Residential. Administration had conversations with the applicant about the potential of subdividing this, and we encouraged them to, to apply for rezoning first, as they would not have any point in subdividing if this weren't to go through, and the subdivision application is lengthier, more expensive, and more rigorous, so this is the first step for that process. Administration recommends defeating the proposed amendments for the following reasons: insufficient supporting rationale and technical evidence demonstrating how the proposal would conform with the area redevelopment plan's visions and objectives as required by Policy 5.15 of the East Olds ARP. Development of the road right-of-way needed to access this portion of land would significantly impact the use and enjoyment of neighboring parcels of land. Development of the road would also require the removal of several mature trees, which conflicts with ARP Policy 4.8.1. And once the road is developed, ownership and maintenance of the road and underground utilities would be at the expense of the town. And in speaking with other departments, the town does not have, does not want to entertain maintaining an additional 100 meters of road and sewer and water for one new building. So the town, these bylaws received first reading on May 27, 2024, and notice of the public hearing was advertised on the town website and in the June 4 and 11 issues of the newspaper. It was circulated by mail to 12 area property owners. The town has received 10 letters of concern or opposition regarding this. There were nine received when the RFD, when the agenda package was put together. I did receive one more this morning that when it comes to speaking in opposition, I will read into the public record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move forward once again. I do not need to explain the procedure, as you're all still the same participants in the gallery, so we'll go ahead, and I will start by calling first time for those in support of the proposed bylaws. Please approach the podium, ma'am. And again, state your name and who you're speaking on behalf.
Hi, I'm Nancy Wilkinson. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit unprepared for this. My husband is at work. Yeah, so we, we applied for the subdivision. We have lived in a couple properties in that area. We've seen a lot of changes in the industrial areas as well behind us. There, what, actually, we saw an ad in the paper, they were looking for like land in town to use, and this is a, a really nice piece of property. It is all fenced around, and it, the alleyway does run up, you know, it would run between the residential properties there. We, I understand, would be paying for the roadway. What we're planning is a multi-family residence, residence back there, like maybe a three-story apartment building. There's room for parking, there's room for a park area for kids. What else can I tell you? Yeah, it's, it's a, you know, it's a, one part would back on the, of course, the, the industrial, and one part of it would be around residential. So the train does run across from us, so, you know, there, there's expected noise there, and yeah, I, it's a, I'm sorry, my husband isn't here to, to elaborate on it.
No apologies necessary. You're doing, you're doing a good job. Did you have correspondence for our legislation clerk you wanted to leave with her?
No, I don't, but I could write something up. I just found out at 12 that I was coming today.
Understand, understand. Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll call for a second time for any of those that are in support. Seeing none, we will move for those opposed, for those opposed. Thank you. I will, for the second time, I believe we have one more letter, so I'll have Mr. Sloan read the added letter of opposed.
Thank you. This letter was received this morning from Alan and Megan Aralano at 4825 56th Street. I just, I also want to preference that there's a number of mentions of Olds Planning Commission in here that the letter is addressed to, but, so I'll read it that way, but it would be intended to be for council. Dear members of the Town Planning Commission, I am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed construction of an apartment complex in our quiet residential neighborhood. As a resident of this beautiful neighborhood and 13-year resident of Olds, I believe this development would significantly detract from the peaceful and harmonious atmosphere that currently defines our area. Our neighborhood is known for its quiet environment, where families enjoy a sense of safety and cohesion. Introducing a large-scale apartment complex would undoubtedly lead to increased traffic congestion on our already narrow streets. This not only poses potential safety risks, but also diminishes the quality of life for current residents who value the calm and unhurried pace of our community. Furthermore, the proposed complex does not seem to align with the architectural aesthetics of our neighborhood. Many of us have invested in our homes with the understanding that the surrounding environment would remain predominantly single-family residences. Introducing multi-unit dwellings could disrupt the visual harmony and character of the neighborhood, impacting property values and overall appeal of the area. I also have concerns about the strain this development might place on our local infrastructure, specifically on water and sewer lines, parking, et cetera. Statistically, high-density areas have seven times higher problem with, problem interaction rate. While growth and progress are essential, it is crucial that any new developments are thoughtfully planned and considerate of the existing community's needs and preferences. Additionally, as a local real estate agent, this is detrimental to the property value of our neighborhood because of the footprint of the apartment building would impose on the neighborhood. I urge the planning commission to carefully reconsider this proposal and to prioritize the voices and concerns of the residents who will be most affected by this decision. Alternatives that better respect the residential nature of our neighborhood should be explored, ensuring that any future development enhances rather than compromises, compromises the unique qualities that make our community a desirable place to live. Thank you for considering my perspective on this matter. I trust that you make, will make a decision that serves the best interests of all residents and preserves the character of our beloved neighborhood.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention from the resident, Mr. Sloan. I would, I would like to say that those persons deemed effective have already been taken care of from those opposed, am I correct? Are there any deemed affected on? Okay, then we're covered for that, and I will now ask my council members if they have any comments. Counsel Cummings?
Sorry, do we not ask the public if they want to speak?
I did.
Before we, you just asked them if they were opposed, they raised their hands. I don't believe we actually asked them if any of them wanted to come up and speak.
It's not, during Counsel Cummings, when they are asked to come, they speak whether they're for or against and tell their story?
Tell their story.
Right. Does anybody else want to add any more comments to you? Okay. So you're, you're, again, you're opposed, so I'm asking for those opposed to speak to the podium. Thank you. Okay, so, so that's, that's what he was speaking to. Thank you. You're welcome to be here.
My name is Sandra Lewis. I own the property at 4837 56th Street. I, or my parents, have lived there for over 51 years. We have had this ongoing issue before in regards to that exact same chunk of property. In 1986, the entire block, I'm the only one left alive of the entire block that came to that meeting, and it was taken to Red Deer Planning in, in Red Deer. It went that far. The block was extremely annoyed by the situation. We didn't want to lose. We have, and just on our lots alone, Mr. Martin's and my lots alone, we have 28 mature trees that were there when Jack Ross, who we bought the property from 50 years ago, lived at. We like the peace and the quiet despite the railroad track, we don't care about that. But for 51 years, we have lived there. Red Deer Planning has already denied access of any kind to that back property by coming up the carriage lane through boutwells or up the carriage, the other laneway that had been used for garbage when we moved there. It's been denied by Red Deer Planning, and we had hoped then, in 1986, that it wouldn't come up again. We like our property, we like the peace and the quiet. It's gone through a lot of changes in the 50 years I've been there, but I would prefer that it stays the quiet piece of property that it is in East Olds, in the heritage part of Olds, and that's all I've got to say. I'll let the rest of them grump. Thank you.
Thank you very much. When the call for opposed is, anyone is welcome to speak, so if somebody would like to speak, please approach the podium.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Madeline Carr, and my husband, Michael Carr, we own a house on 4833 56th Street. So the land property in question, behind our house is a utility right-of-way that a lot of people think is a road or an alley. It's not open. It's our private property. We've heard rumors that the property that's in question, they're gonna let people tell them to use that road, like to use that opening to get to their property. So our concern is, that's a utility right-of-way, it's personal property. We don't want people going back and forth through there. So I'm not sure if this, because that's...
Very clear, very clear.
Yeah, because that's what a few people have told us, is that they're just gonna, oh, that's a laneway, just go through there, and it's absolutely not.
Actually, I do understand that. I've known people that have lived in that area that...
Correct. We've had multiple issues, yes.
It's a utility for power, power utility.
Yeah. We can't, we can't build on it, we can't close it, we can't do anything, so this is what somebody said, is they're just gonna drive through, and that's our property.
Thank you. Any further comments? State your name.
Hello, my name is Jana Norris. My husband and myself own two properties on the street at 4809 56th Street and 4813 56th Street. 4813 is our primary residence, which would be kitty-corner to this proposed area. I would like to point out the quiet of this neighborhood that others have mentioned, but also, I don't know how patrolling could work in this area right now. It's very dark on our street. Obviously, there's not much traffic. I think that it would be a huge concern to have multiple dwellings in this spot and very little access for police, fire, that kind of thing. And yeah, as other neighbors have said, we all purposefully chose this area of town because of its quiet, the bigger lots, has a bit more of a relaxed country living atmosphere as a country residential area, so we would all very much like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. I will call one more time if anybody else wishes to speak. Okay, you're going, we've, you've, okay, you've, I'll let you speak one more time, even though you are in support. Your husband's not here, so go ahead one more time.
Hi, I'm just wondering if in fact that is the policy there with that roadway, because we lived there previously, and they said it was owned by the town, that back alleyway, and like right now, people have it all blocked off, so you don't, you know, I don't know that that's, is that actually the case? But we've been told...
Get the development officer to, to...
Okay.
Recall the CAO Williams, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I'll invite Kyle Sloan back up if that's okay, just to refrain from the public debate back and forth.
Very much, but we don't allow debating on the floor. We go back to, we'll go back to the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, I would like to clarify this. Yeah, I'll use GIS because that shows it clearly. So the shaded parcels here are private property, and as with anywhere in town, if there's no parcel, that is considered a road plan, a road right-of-way. Now, there's, there is a utility right-of-way as well. You will see, if I zoom in, all of the fences on the properties to the north are quite a ways inside their property lines. South of those fences is the utility right-of-way, and south of that is the road right-of-way that extends into there, and then there's a laneway that comes from the east and extends there. These are vestiges of road plan many decades old that were never developed as a road, and parcels, this large industrial parcel has developed since then, and so there's never been road development, but from back, I believe as far back as the 50s or 60s is when this road plan was established but never developed.
If it had explanation, explanation. I now will move to my counsel for comments. Go ahead, Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I just want a clarification from Mr. Sloan with regards to, just going back to that, that picture then, so those, I'm not sure what they are, it looks like containers or whatever, so they would actually be sitting on our, the roadway that was never developed, and they're actually, that, is that our property then?
Yes, that appears to be the case in this 2021 aerial photo, that these units are on our property.
Okay, thank you.
There you go, you learn something new every day. Counsel Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. Just my brief comment, there is a balance for me. We do know from the recent housing assessment need survey done that Olds does need more housing, more affordable housing, higher-density housing, so I try and balance that, though, certainly with the unique aspect of this area within East Olds, the residential issues and concerns that have been brought forward, and the fact that what I'll call Olds is on the verge, it would seem, of a little bit of a mini-building boom when it comes to the higher-density type dwellings and housing. Whether those all come to fruition or not, what the timeline is, remains to be seen, but for me, at this point, when I take everything into account, I can't support the rezoning application here at this point in time, again, based on the residential concerns, the unique nature of this area, and the fact that we've got quite a few projects in the, in the funnel right now to address some of our housing needs. That's not to say sometime in the future, things could change.
Thank you very much. As far as my comments go, I do respect everything I've heard today as well, especially the administration recommendations with regards to the reasonings why our council members should defeat this motion, and financially, a lot of that comes into play to where the town of Olds sits today as well, and I just would add those comments as well. If there's nothing is further, do you have anything further, Mr. Sloan? Very good, thank you very much. Then I declare the public hearing closed for 2024, 25 and 26 bylaws at 1:50 PM. Moving back again, please, council members, to page 15 of the agenda, and I would be asking for the second reading of bylaw 2024-26. for the second reading of bylaw 2024-26. Counsel Daly.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that bylaw 2024-26 be given second reading as presented.
Thank you, Counsel Daly. I will now call for the vote. Those in favor? I keep getting confused because I give counsel comments during the public hearing, and now we're going back to the bylaws. So I will give comments to my counselors. And do you have a question, Counsel Cummings?
Just a couple of quick comments on the, on the motion. So I appreciate the clarification on the alleyway issue that seemed to be a little bit of a concern for everybody, so I'm happy to understand that clarity. Everybody knows I'm a huge proponent of R3 development in the town of Olds, as Counsel Wilson mentioned during the town hall. It's an important need in our community. But I also agree with him on the appropriateness of the development in the communities that we're developing it in, and the overwhelming support from the community, or not support, sorry, overwhelming opposition from the community members in this particular community. 10 out of 12 responses is a large, the largest number of responses I've ever seen in my 10 years as counsel. So I will not be supporting this for those two reasons.
Any other comments from counsel at this time? Counsel Walsh?
Yeah, I'm not supporting this motion, but we need to remember that this is the East Olds redevelopment plan, and it's come about because of the demand for R3 development on these large lots. If I was a landowner and I wanted to maximize my money from it, I'd probably want to lobby counsel for R3. But this East Olds redevelopment plan was put in place to prevent that from happening, especially on spot developments like this. You know, these residents in this area, you know, they want the assurance that they can invest in their properties and have no large, I'm going to say, apartment buildings. But the demand for R3 was such that it was happening all through the community. And we've, in the past, located R3 in certain areas and tried to prevent it from happening in spots throughout the areas, especially in Aravon area. So yeah, for that reason, it was a long process for the East Olds redevelopment plan, and I think it was wise what they did. So I would defeat this motion.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh. Any further comments before I call for the vote? Very good. We have a second reading on the floor from Counsel Daly at this time, and I will call for the vote. Those in favor? Those opposed? That motion is defeated. I would ask for a motion, please, for 2024-25 bylaw. Deputy Mayor...
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that bylaw 2024-25 be given second reading as presented.
Thank you. Open the floor for counsel comments. Seeing none, I will move forward with, and I would call for the vote. Those in favor? Those opposed? That motion is defeated. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for attending our council meeting for your public hearing today. And we have one more. You're more than welcome to stay, but I'm sure some of you may have to leave. Take care. All right, council members, page 34, please, of your agenda. And this is going to be a public hearing today for bylaw 2024-27, amendment to the land use bylaw. And I would, before going into, no, I have to go into the public hearing first, I'm sorry, because we have our land planner here. I call the public hearing open at 1:54 p.m. for 2024-27, and ask Mr. Sloan to please give the details to the bylaw.
Thank you again. This is a land use bylaw amendment application that was received for a site-specific amendment affecting the parcel at 6308 46th Street. The amendment proposes to add self-storage facility as a permitted use on the property. Self-storage facility means one or more buildings where each of, each building contains separate compartments, and each compartment has separate access. And the compartments may be made available to the general public for storage of personal This application was received from an existing business that is seeking to expand the services that they provide at that business on their, on their property. The location of the storage unit would actually be behind the existing building in the form of containers and C cans that would be converted to storage units. The units would be, would not be visible from public, not be visible from the service road to the south of the building. The rear yard is screened all the way around. The adjacent properties to the north are all industrial, and the property to the west is commercial zoning, but is a motorbike and a service business that also uses its rear yard for storage of vehicles and equipment, as shown in the photos here. The, this bylaw received first reading on May 27, and the notice of public hearing was advertised on the website and in the June 4 and 11 issues of the newspaper. Letters were circulated to five area property owners, and we have received no correspondence for or against this proposal. Thank you.
Very much, Mr. Sloan. As we have no gallery members of, sitting in the gallery at this point, I will now move down to ask for counsel comments. Thank you very much. Any final comments from yourself, development officer?
Only the recommendation that, that bylaw 2024-27 be given second and third reading as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. I now call the public hearing closed at 1:57 p.m. and ask, and council members for second reading, please. Counsel Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I make the motion that bylaw number 2024-27 be given second reading as presented.
Thank you, Counsel Wilson. Any comments? Counsel Cummings?
Just one quick question. We talked earlier about one of the amendments would still require a change of use development permit. In this case here, we're changing the zoning with the land use bylaw. Do we still need to do a change, a change of use development permit after this, or is this all encompassed into this one motion?
Thank you for the question. This is not a change of zoning, but it is adding that definition, self-storage facility as a permitted use, specific to this lot block and plan, like this specific parcel, as a permitted use, so that a development permit application will follow. But as a permitted use, administration would be able to review and issue a decision on that permit.
Thank you. Any further comments? We have a motion on the floor from Counsel Wilson. I'll call for the vote, please, for second reading. All those in favor? That is carried. Third and final reading, Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that bylaw number 2024-27 be given third reading as presented.
Thank you, Counsel Ryan. I will now call, any further comments? No, I didn't see any hands. Those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. And thank you once again, Mr. Sloan, for being with us. I see you'll be with us one more time. If we're moving down to page 39 of our agenda for development permits, where we have Mr. Sloan with us once again. Podium's yours.
Thank you again. Development permit application, DP 24-086, is for an extension and covering of an existing deck at 16 kilo and close. The applicant is seeking to build a roof over their deck. The current shape of the deck, in speaking with the builder, makes that challenging task, and they're looking for more deck space. So they're extending the deck, or they're hoping to extend the deck into the rear yard setback, which requires a variance of 37.7%, which the development officer cannot approve. The, we have spoken with our building inspector, and the proposed plans do comply with the provincial building code, and there are no concerns there. So the recommendation is that counsel approve development permit, DP 24-086, as presented, subject to the conditions listed in the attached draft development permit.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll go ahead and get a motion on the floor, please. Deputy Mayor Ryan? Deputy Mayor Blatz?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that counsel approve development permit application, DP 24-06, as presented, subject to the conditions listed in the attached draft development permit. Sorry, 86.
Very good. Thank you. Do we have questions? Counsel Daly?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. Through you to Mr. Sloan. Why do we have the six-meter setback in place to begin with if we're going to be looking at variance when somebody applies for one?
Thank you. The six-meter setback is the setback for the house, the main part of the house itself. An uncovered deck would be able to extend halfway into that. Since this has a cover and a roof on it, it's considered less of a deck in terms of setbacks and more part, an extension of the full house. So that's where the six-meter setback applies.
So supplemental, thank you, Mayor Doll. So my reasoning is that we're going to be 37.7% within that setback. So what effect is this going to have on neighboring properties and any other utilities, whatever, would take place normally within that six meters?
Thank you. Normally, it would just be part of the backyard. There is a drainage right-of-way, I believe, but that's not, that wouldn't affect any of this proposal. Typically, the six-meter rear yard setback, I think, is more just for, to create more privacy in rear yards.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counsel Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. Just a quick question through you to the development officer. Remind me, perhaps I missed it. There are no letters, feedback in support of or against this particular development?
Thank you, and that is a good question. For discretionary uses, adjacent landowners get circulated for, prior to a decision being made. For variances, they only get circulation of a decision with information on how to appeal that decision.
Very good. Anything further? We have a motion on the floor from Deputy Mayor Blatz. I will then call for the vote. Those in favor? That is carried. Thank you once again for your time. Down to page 45 of your agenda, please, and this is a presentation, item 4A, infrastructure quarterly report. Director Pedro?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and counsel. I will do my best to keep this brief. There's quite a bit of content in here. Overall, I could say that the team's been quite active, quite busy for this second quarter here, so. Oops. There we go. So in our overview of our utilities group, there's quite a few things I will point out. This is a mix of both internal crew and contracted work. As you can see, there's a few RFQs that we've been working through. Some have closed as of last week, so we haven't started the work there. Manhole relining, that one closed earlier, so that work is currently ongoing. The manhole inspections, I will point out, the town has over 935 manholes in town. We worked pretty hard, and this was an effort between both utilities and public works, to get all of the manholes that we could access inspected. So this was one of the priorities that we determined would be important to determine which manholes need to be relined or worked on, and so the team did quite well there. Manhole adjustments is another one we've been quite actively working on, and there's a subsequent slide in here with a little bit more detail. But we have completed 15, and that's quite important there. Sewer main inspections, this work has already started, so our goal is to complete about 48 kilometers of the town's sanitary infrastructure, and that's just going to give us a better understanding of what it looks like, what's going on, any sources of influence, infiltration there, so. And the big one here would be the water service and water main slash hydrant repairs. So to date, as, when this presentation was prepared, we had 15 that we've identified. There's actually another one that we discovered last week, so we're technically at 16 at this point. So five, five of them still need to be repaired, but we have repaired 10, so. Next slide, please. Okay, this is my, my least favorite and my, my most favorite slide. So on the water loss side, because we've been doing quite a bit of work on the leak detection and the repairs, we do see that downward trend between January and May this year. So in my mind, we're headed in the right direction there. Unfortunately, on the wastewater side, our numbers are creeping up. Now, that being said, we haven't done a ton of work on any sort of maintenance or repairs there, so I think we'll see a culmination of a lot of the inspections and the assessments that we're doing. This will start trending downward as we actually complete that, that work later this year. So. Perfect. And just a quick summary reminder on the vapor testing repair updates. We still have that one outstanding location at the Imperial Road Storage Yard, and that's imminent here. We're hoping, just dealing with that landowner, it's been a little bit tricky, but one, one location outstanding, so. All right, so this slide, we, as counsel may have recalled, we did hire a contractor to do the advanced leak detection. And so this is the one where contractor comes in, installs quite small little, essentially little pucks, and those sensors stay, remain installed overnight and can identify leaks through low, lower flow conditions, and can actually correlate and tell us within approximately two to three feet where a leak is. So that process was quite effective. Through that process alone, we found seven leaks. Some were quite large that we had no idea were there. And so there's only four outstanding repairs for, for those seven locations. Some of these are a little bit trickier. There's two main valves. There's one hydrant, and then there's another service that needs to be investigated further. So we will get there, but it has been identified, so. And the additional sections we're performing would be this yellow and green section. So the yellow being quite large, it excludes the cornerstone area at this point. Much of that infrastructure is technically not the town's, although depending on the results of the investigation, we may look at the future of doing those private areas, so whether it be on the college or something like a cornerstone area. And then, of course, the north highway two-way section there in green. Perfect. Before getting on to manhole inspections, I well wanted to kind of backtrack a little. Now, the services that we've repaired this year, you know, typically services in a more typical environment, services tend to break because of largely age. Unfortunately, what we're finding in the town of Olds, a lot of the services are breaking due to poor workmanship. So out of six, but there's six locations so far, out of the 11 breaks that we've had, six of them have been because of poor workmanship and not necessarily because of age. So what we're seeing is that, you know, on 61st Avenue, for example, that was installed in the 70s. It's not super old, but what we're seeing is that... It's not super old, but what we're seeing is that it wasn't installed correctly, there was too much tension put under the line. It was put adjacent to sewers, which you can't really do because of the hot cold. On Cypress, for example, that was built in 1993, based on our records, assuming those are accurate. And that one, again, was just a large, essentially rock that was used as backfill, and that rock essentially pushes on service lines, creates weak points in the wall, and then these lines blow. And Park Meadows, again, similar thing, that was put in in the 2000s, not very old at all, and the same type of thing, just poor workmanship causing these failures in the service lines. So it creates a challenge. Typically, when you do a high, high-level assessment on where leaks could be, one of the first things that you look at is how old is this infrastructure? Because that typically gives us an idea of what areas to look at first, but that's not the case in the Town of Olds, so it does create some problems when we're trying to assess all the areas, but we are getting there.
Take questions as they come. So Counselor Cummings?
Sure. Thanks. I don't normally interrupt the presentations, but I just, since you started the topic about the quality of the workmanship here, we've had reports before, the quality of the materials in question in one particular neighborhood were so poor that they were the main cause here, but you're talking about the actual process of the work being done, not necessarily the quality of the materials being installed. Is that correct?
I would say that it's probably a combination of both. So from my understanding, based on what I could gather, the town's had pretty lax or nonexistent QA and QC policies. You know, so whether it's the case that we're not actually looking what material type that's being used by the contractor or the developer, or the town's physically not going out inspecting what's being done in the field, I think it's probably a combination of both. Moving on to the sanitary side, so as I alluded to earlier, the town has approximately 935 manholes in town. This number does include all the locations that we don't necessarily own as well, so once you extrapolate what the town owns, it's about 800 manholes. We've completed 749 inspections. Much of that is because we can't access a lot of those manholes. They're buried, for the most part, those remaining 51. Now, the funny thing is through that process of all those inspections, we've determined that 123 manholes need to be relined. As an example, in our manhole program this year, we're doing 23, and that's a cost of roughly $140,000. So to perform 123 manhole relinings will take us quite a bit of resources, so we'll have to stagger that out over many years. But the plan at this point is to just, once we've had a chance to really go through those inspection reports, determine what that future replacement or relining work is going to look like, so. And then, jumping to the main line, we do have the camera company starting to do that camera work on 48 kilometers. Based on this is how we're going to determine what sections of main line are going to be relined. Now, this slide does specifically say we want to do about six kilometers. Based on the RFP that closed last week, we'll, based on that, the unit rate for each meter, we're probably looking more realistically to do about four kilometers. So unfortunately, prices have gone up, but we'll kind of work within our scope and our budget as best we can. And then tying into the sewer main inspections, this is just a map showing visualization of the areas that we are going to have camered. As you can see, that 48 kilometers does give us a large bulk of the town's inventory. We do exclude areas like the college, the Highlands, obviously it's newer area, so in theory, shouldn't have a lot of issues. And then cornerstone, the vistas are excluded as well. We're hopeful through this process, we'll get a very clear understanding of what's going on underground and where our problem areas are. Slide. Okay, this, we wanted to give council an understanding of what we're doing with our smart cover program. So to date, we've, we've got 14 covers installed. They haven't really been rotated on a regular basis, so the data that we have, although that was something, we haven't rotated them enough to actually isolate certain sections of town. So what we're intending to do is actually move them on two- to three-week rotations. This, these 12 locations shown in green, this is kind of the first phase of moving those, those covers. The intent with these locations are strategically picked so that it helps us isolate certain sections. So for example, on Highway 27 and 57th there, there's a few to the southeast on 51st and Those will help us isolate whether it's coming from upstream of there, those locations, or coming from somewhere else. So if we do determine that in one of these green locations, there is something going on, then we'll actually target that area and figure out which sections or which blocks need to be addressed further, so. Yep, no, it's all good. Continuing on the sanitary, this one's always interesting for me, so we do track the SRD volumes at the lift station, the precipitation that we do have in town, and then the average temperatures. So what's interesting about this graph, and I appreciate there's sort of a lot going on here, is that in the blue, you'll see the SRDL flows on May 27th were about 5,600 cubes, and they had a rainfall that's around that time of 12.9 millimeters. If you look at the May 26th number, there's actually less SRD volume at five, just under 5,100 cubes, but there's actually more rain during that time, which is quite strange. So in my mind, and I, you know, certainly could be wrong, but what this is telling us, and we have previous data from earlier months that suggests this as well, is that even though precipitation plays a factor, it's not the only factor. So if it was the only factor, then we would actually see, in theory, similar or higher volumes on May 26th. So there's other issues going on besides precipitation. The precipitation is getting in from somewhere from the surface, but the other theory is that groundwater is also an issue, which will partially cause my precipitation as well. But nonetheless, this information's quite helpful just to see what's going on with that relationship, so it's something we're going to continue to explore as, as we move forward into the season here. So this is just a quick synopsis of the manholes. It gives you a pretty good idea of what we're finding underground. So you'll see on that bottom-left photo, that's a manhole that we exposed just east of the operation center, and you can see quite a big gap between that top ring and the rest of the barrel. So it's not very, very low in compared to the adjacent grade, so any sort of, say, precipitation gets into the ground, is going to go right into that manhole, right? So it's not, that wasn't constructed properly, and we're finding this at multiple locations. So in my mind, and as part of our plan, every manhole that's currently buried or that we know is buried, needs to be exposed. So that's something we need to work through because certain manholes are in locations that are very convenient. For example, behind Willow, there's a line that goes through there, that goes right through a farmer's field, so there's going to have to be some consideration made there of what that looks like. But this type of stuff is certainly an issue, and needs to be, needs to be dealt with at some point, but it is, it is on the list. All right. This is Sheena's favorite slide. So just wanted to give council a rough breakdown of what the costs look like. Some of these are what we've spent to date, and most of these are just what we've allocated towards these different initiatives. You'll see the sanitary, sanitary main relining is the bulk of this estimate, and like I mentioned earlier, that should give us approximately four kilometers relined, so at the end of the day, it's not a huge portion of our sanitary sewer. And if I had to estimate, we need to reline or replace, on the low end, probably 50% of our infrastructure, but we'll kind of keep chipping away at it, so. Any questions on the utilities portion before we switch departments?
Yes, we've got Counselor Cummings and Deputy Mayor Blatz, and then Counselor Ryan.
Thank you. If we can just jump up to 56, page 56, for a quick second. So when we're taking these, this data, I know it probably is an insignificant amount, but we have the commercial inflow at the pumping station. Is that commercial volume included in this volume or excluded from this volume?
So that would be excluded. So yeah, at the end of the day, SRD does some subtractions to what they, they put on their invoice.
Deputy Mayor Blatz?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. Through you to Director Pedro. First of all, I just want to say thank you and to your team for your continued work on the INI water loss situation that we have, and I would think that in light of Calgary's recent event, where it's caused some catastrophic events, I think it's really important to continue to work on this and assess our current infrastructure. And I really appreciate the cost estimates as well. This will certainly help us when it comes to budgeting time so that we know going forward what needs to be done and the potential cost, although we realize year-to-year inflation and other costs factor into this, but that was my comment. I just, so approximately then, my question is, it's about $6,800 per manhole to do the replacements? Okay, I want to thank you all, and clarification on that again, that'll be good for budgeting processes.
Yeah, while we brought that topic up, thanks Deputy Mayor Blatz, about Calgary, I recall Jody, Mayor Jody saying that they had sonar on that pipe, and it, they didn't, there was no sound, and I sure hope that wouldn't happen to us in the future, because that's why you have them. Okay, we'll go in order here, Deputy Ryan, and then, sorry, Counselor Ryan, and then we'll go to Counselor Walsh and back to Cummings.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I have a question on page 52, we're talking about the manholes. The ones that are requiring relining, you've got 123, and we've done 23. Is that, I would imagine that's not included in that 123 because we've already done them. But question I have, are the, the 123, are they all roughly the same condition, or will you be looking at prioritizing each repair so that we have X number done each year over the next several years, obviously, but depending on budgeting, of course, might be able to do more some year than others, but I'm just wondering what kind of condition they're in, if they're all roughly the same or not?
Yep, thank you for the question. So the 123 number does include the 23 that are getting done this year. At the time of writing the report, that work hadn't started, so that's why those were included. As far as the remaining ones that need to be done, it's quite a wide range. So on the, on the least severe, you're going to get a bit of sweating or infiltration from, say, the base or the benching, could be relatively minor. The most severe, you will see deteriorated benching at the bottom, or significant infiltration or sweating further up the barrel. So there's quite a wide range. I don't know exactly what the percentage is of severe versus least severe, but that's part of the process. Once we've finished going through those reports, we'll actually triage and determine what, which one needs to go first.
Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if you can comment on page 48 with the water loss and INI update, especially where it says wastewater loss? I really hope our residents aren't reading that as we're losing wastewater, but, and also January, it's almost 10% higher than February, which is unusual for...
Yeah, that, I'd have to go back and look at the data from, at least the precipitation data from January and February. I don't know that off the top of my head, sorry.
CEO Williams?
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure January was a snow melt was the largest cause, if I ever recall, asking Adrian the exact same question six months ago. And yeah, good, good point on the subheading there. We certainly are not losing wastewater. It means that we are getting water into our sanitary system. There still is enough gravity and pressure to make sure the effluent gets to the lift stations. Just what else is getting in the pipe along with the effluent and therefore getting metered and sent to red deer? So, good, good catch.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. And CEO Williams, we'll move to Counselor Cummings, then Counselor Daly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So a comment quickly, then a question. So since Calgary's water main break was brought up, and Director Pedro talked earlier about the quality of the workmanship, I do believe that Calgary has come up with a possible reason for their failure was because they put the wrong soil into the dig site after they were done. So that touches base to everything there about quality control and quality assurance work being done on all of these projects. The quick question is, in reference to page 57, the manhole adjustments, these buried manholes, I'm going to suppose, because I don't know, and that's what I would like is some clarification here, that this is infrastructure that was built on land that is planning to be developed in the future, and that's why this infrastructure is here. Who owns this infrastructure at this stage? Us or the developer, in most cases? And the second thing is, is I would assume that part of the quality control is that before these are buried, they're inspected for correctness and then buried, and I'm just wondering if that is part of the, the process in which we're taking over the infrastructure, or if that's just done by the developer without a municipal, municipal quality assurance at all?
So a few questions in there. As far as ownership, so these are all town-owned, so regardless of whether they go through municipal road allowance or they go through a private land, there would be an easement or utility right of way there, and so the town would own the infrastructure. As far as why they're buried, I never recommend from the engineering side that they be buried. That's not something we typically like seeing done. If they do need to be buried, there are ways of doing that. You need to use a sealed lid. Generally, we'd actually line the insides, just in case the rubber gaskets on, on the barrel go, so that, and these, none of this was done on these locations. Typically, what you'd like to see is if it can't be, if for whatever reason, somebody doesn't want the manhole there, then you try and just have it above the ground, just the manhole ring itself, as opposed to any portion of the barrel, in ideal situations. The best way to do it is actually have a small section of the barrel sticking up so that you actually don't have any of that flow coming in. So that picture on the top right, that's more or less what you typically like to see. This was on 54th by the school on the south side. That's typically the level you'd want it compared to the adjacent grade, so.
Thank you very much for getting all of those questions together, and Counselor Daly?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. Through you to Director Pedro. Going back to page 56, and I don't expect you to have an answer today because I'm just, I'm just noticing this, as far as looking at the rainfall outside of May 7th or May 26th, either before, after, in between, we have zero rainfall, but yet we still have, the line is still moving up and down the blue line above, so there's definitely contribution going into our wastewater outside of the rainfall periods as well. Do you have any speculation? Are you... Are you thinking that's groundwater? Or do you think that's domestic leakage? Or what's your thoughts on that? Because there is still considerable increases on day-to-day basis there with that blue line.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great observation. So when you assess that portion of the data, that's where the theory that it's getting in from groundwater itself, and whether it's cracks in the pipes or joints or within wastewater services is another common one, especially when they're clay tile and the ground shifts and services tend to shift or crack. The other big thing, and we have a very strong theory, and I think it is supported by the data so far, is that sump pumps are an issue. So there seems to be a lot of areas of town, particularly in the downtown area, that have sump pumps. And so what we do see, not necessarily in this particular set that I've provided, but in some of the other sets with previous months, you actually see when temperatures start to go up, that the levels start to go up, and there isn't necessarily precipitation to accompany that. So, and anecdotally, we've heard from certain areas that sump pumps are running more than they ever have. So all that stuff tends to be going into the sanitary, especially if it wasn't built within the last 20 years or so, because those connections were allowed years ago. So we're just dealing with the repercussions today.
Supplemental, thank you. And to go along with your sump pump comments, I did see advertising on behalf of the Town of Wolves. Have we had much uptake on, or information coming in on that, in that regard?
Yeah, thank you for the question. That's a good point. We put that out, I believe, last week, and we've had three reports along that line, and two actually have turned into potential leaks. We're pretty certain, so it is quite helpful. Yep.
They in the same area where you got the calls?
No, different areas.
Well, that's good to hear. Very good. Deputy Mayor Blatts?
I think you and I have one final comment here. And going through you to Director Pedro, in our neighborhood, one of our neighbors has taken a long extended hose from their sump pump. And what they're doing is sometimes what, you know, if we've had those little rainfalls or whatever's happened, and their sump pump is running, it actually comes through with enough force that they've been able to have a sprinkler that will move with the water, and they've been reusing that water to water their plants and their lawn and their gardens. So, you know, for those folks who might want to be ingenious, like my neighbors, it might be something you want to look into other than a rain barrel.
That was a really good comment because that's what they're doing in Calgary. They're sharing all the techniques that they've learned, and that's what they're doing in Calgary, too. Well, you sure come up with good things when you're in trouble, aren't you? Go ahead and continue on with your report, Director Pedro.
Perfect, thank you. So switching to our public works group, just a quick summary on what they've been doing. They've been keeping busy at the cemetery. They are out doing their IR paving, and they've been consistently doing the cold mix patching. So just an idea of those quantities there. Going forward, I will note, I'm not a fan of providing, say, a tonnage of asphalt or a tonnage of cold mix. In the future, the goal is to change this to a specific area. So in my mind, 10 square meters means a lot more than one ton of material, but we are improving those tracking techniques. That being said, we are looking at doing our sidewalk and asphalt repairs. Those have been put out, they've just closed. Asphalt closes next week, but we are moving along. Next slide, please. Oh, Marcy, I'm sorry. And then back to the procurement. I just wanted to give counsel, because there's been quite a bit coming out from our divisions, so this is just a quick summary of what we have out there. Those four on June 19th, so sewer main, catch basins, utilities, and sidewalk all closed last week. We expect those to be awarded later on this week. And then once the asphalt program closes next week, we'll award that likely the same week as well. Environmental initiatives, wanted to give counsel an idea of how these programs are going. So the rain barrel program actually has a pretty decent uptake in my books. 26 barrels have been purchased and cost the town roughly $1,300. I think it's pretty minimal for the benefit that we are providing to residents there. Home compost are not as popular, only seven so far. And then the branch stump, which has been only open for 16 days so far, we've received 98 loads. Now, that's the best way of tracking it at this point, because we only stipulated that people have a maximum of one load. So one load could be, you know, a five gallon pail that they bring, or it could be a truck bed full, right? So it's hard to quantify otherwise, but I think there is decent use of it so far. And then the pop-up transfer station, this one was interesting. So only, I believe it was 64% of the people that registered for this came. I'm not sure what the reason was. We did expect most of the people to come, but nonetheless, 119 did come to that program, and we received about 11 tons of household waste, and we did have quite a bit of hazardous waste as well. Some good comments that we received there is that people appreciated providing or being able to drop off the hazardous waste, so they did like that program. I did hear from multiple people as well that they appreciated that the town wasn't spending lots of time and resources going around collecting at the curb for two weeks. So I think that was a positive program as well. Planning and infrastructure, so a few things going on here. 52nd Street is underway. They are actually working on completing top lifts, so they're milling all of the joints and all around the manholes there. That is anticipated to be paved tooplift next week, so that should be done relatively soon. 67A, we just continue with preliminary engineering and the wetland assessment. And then the interesting thing is the digital permitting. So we are looking at how we can become more efficient as a department. Moving to digital is a big part of that. So we're going to be looking at different programs that can facilitate that, one being through the citywide platform. They do have that functionality, if it makes sense, we'd be looking at integrating there. If it doesn't, then we'll look elsewhere. But lots of options out there. Okay, planning and development. So just, we, Kyle does a great job of tracking our approval timelines. And unfortunately, during, for this quarter, timelines did increase, the opposite of the way we wanted to go. A big impetus to this increase was the fact that literally a third of the applications came to council. So when that happens, things tend to take a bit longer, just given the dates. And so that's something we'll have to work on going forward, largely the reason why we want to reduce the amount that is going to council there. And the other issue there is that with that third going to council, that's 16 RFDs. So it is quite a bit for staff there. On the building permit side, so fairly self-explanatory. Of the permits that, DP permits that we've received, not all have transitioned into BP permits. So this number for 2024 is a little low for the quarter, assuming that those DPs turn into BPs. We expect these numbers to go up. And next slide, on the DP side. So May, we did have quite a big month. That's largely due to the one development of that 70-unit mixed-use development. But all in all, I think DPs are quite busy this year. We're on track to do over 200. So it is a busier year than our typical. Reporter problem. So I don't think there's anything unusual here. Road issues remain the bulk of our reporter problem. Typically, those were sweeping, potholes, those types of things. Back alleys, again, lack of grading or material, or potholes, again. But those are kind of the bigger ones there, so. One thing to note, we are changing, July 2nd, actually, we're transitioning the reporter problem platform to the citywide module there. Not that it will change our reporting, but it's a little bit different in how staff handles that. It's a little bit more automated, so should see some efficiencies there. Next slide, health and safety. So nothing egregious on the health and safety side for the quarter, only two incidents for the infrastructure group. We did include some pictures in there for our health and safety day down at the fire hall. Turned out to be a pretty good event, had a lot of good responses from the attendees. It's a pretty good format, and it got a lot of people involved, which was nice to see. Challenges and solutions. So I kind of struggle with these every quarter. Unfortunately, they don't change. One day they will, but you know, challenge one still remains water loss and wastewater issues. Challenge two, and the next one, again, budget constraints and continually aging infrastructure. And then budget three is still the asset management program, which we are making progress on, I can note. And then future needs, again, this is one of those that hasn't really changed much, aside from the top three community issues. So in the quarter, potholes and sweeping were quite a big topic, so. All right, happy to take any questions.
Very good. Thank you for your report. I think if there's extra questions on top of what we've allowed, you're welcome to. Otherwise, I'll have a motion on the floor, please. Okay, Council Walsh?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that council accepts the infrastructure service's quarter report to as presented for information.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor then. No further comments. I call for the vote. Those in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you very much for your detailed report today. We have no new business. We'll go to page 72, please, of your agenda now for 6A, Correspondence and Information. We have one correspondence that was received on June 14th, and it's with regards to Canada Community Building Fund from Minister Rick MacIver. If there's no questions to this letter, I'd ask for a motion on the floor, please. Deputy Mayor? Oh, I thought she was going for question maybe. Okay? Okay. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that the Correspondence and Information Report ending June 24th, 2024 be received for information.
Thank you very much. And as you can see, that there will be delays in the 2024 program according to municipal fairs. I'll call for the vote. Those in favor? That's Carrie, thank you. Page 74, please, of the agenda for reports from council boards, committees, and commissions. And we have reports from myself, Council Daly, Council Ryan, and Council Blatts. So I'll go to Council Cummings for a report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of highlights here. I am a member of the Red Deer River Municipal User Group. We've been working diligently over the years to convince the government to build a new dam on the river. That's going into the planning stages from their stage, so multimillion-dollar assessments being done on that, which has facilitated a need for a new strategic plan in our group. I was elected onto that committee at our last meeting, and we've met once since then to develop a new strategic plan for Red Deer River Municipal User Group, mostly towards navigating the province to actually build a dam. Also, at the Olds District Chamber of Commerce, again, we started a strategic planning, or did a strategic planning session to move forward into the future and the future needs of Olds and its business community. There are two events that I'd like to talk about. One is our golf tournament, which is an annual fundraiser that we do. It's August 21st. I'm sure we'll get Flyers and Panthers, Panthers, Flyers out to the town to post on its site and stuff like that, but there's a lot of information on the chamber's website itself. As well as, we're hosting an event in July. This is a group of Quebec MPs from Quebec, as well as business owners and representatives from the Quebec regions who are coming to Olds to tour our college and several of our Quebec-based businesses, primarily Premier Tech in the southeast industrial park, as well as to look at properties that are available for their own businesses to expand into the Alberta region. So we're looking at this as a great event to develop more business connections with our sister, with our fellow provinces in Quebec. We'll also be hosting an event in evenings, dinner, and reception at the Cork and Crate on July the 10th at 3:00 PM. Tickets are $20. They'll be available eventually through our chamber event page. I don't think they're ready just yet, but it's a great opportunity to meet up with some other business members from outside of the province who have a desire for land, and that's a big issue that they have where they are. They don't have available land to increase their business space and presence, so they're doing it here, which is great. We can spend Quebec Canadian dollars just as much as we spend over Canadian dollars. So two big, that's a big event. Hopefully, we can get some more information out to everybody and get some invites out for the town as well.
Council Walsh?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Over the months, I've, well, I and you and Council Daly have been working on a code of conduct redraft, May 29th, June 11th, and June 19th. Also, then EDA committee meeting on the 29th of May, and did attend their special event on June 14th where they announced their partnership with Community Futures. Also attended FCM in Calgary, June 5th to June 9th. The new theme there is the new municipal growth framework. It's quite interesting to hear that eight cents on the per tax dollar goes into municipal infrastructure, so looking at increasing that, which hopefully would help us all. And the 19th, I attended a board meeting for the Olds Library. They're challenged getting ground maintenance. They put out a request for proposals, and they only got one, and he never showed up. So it's, the dandelions are problematic. Okay, that's it.
Thank you for your report, Council Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. Just a couple of brief items. Attended in the last month, the Olds Fire Department Bell Ceremony and the service anniversary recognition event. Also attended the pride flag raising, both the Olds College and the E. Cole High School. A couple of days ago, attended the Central Alberta Collegiate Institute, so basically the program with educators and a few elected officials, including the Minister of Education, talking about the dual credit program, the internship, and the apprentice program. And it was certainly promoting the event to educators within certainly central Alberta and Alberta, and the merits of the program in terms of setting students up for success in the various programs such as the dual credit and apprenticeship and trade program. And as was mentioned by my colleagues, FCM, and hopefully a glimmer of hope when the Prime Minister and NDP leader participated, indicating a willingness to certainly look at it, hopefully renegotiate funding to the municipalities, and FCM is certainly advocating for an additional $2.6 billion to municipalities from coast to coast to coast. So look forward to seeing how that will materialize and take a little bit of pressure off the municipalities.
You. Comment, Council Ryan?
Thank you, Madam. I forgot to put one item in my report, and that was that I was reappointed to the Regionalist DAB Board.
Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. Any further comments? A motion on the floor? Oh, go ahead, Council Wilson, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot one, and it's a good news story, especially because I consider myself a foodie. So I went to the myself a foodie. So I went to the chili hot dog cook-off and a week or so ago. Great event, well-attended. Hats off to Clint's Kitchen and all the volunteers and sponsors. But equally important, I think they raised just about twenty-six hundred dollars for Kirsten's Place. So not only was it a great event, well-attended, but a great cause, so.
Very much, very much appreciated, for sure, in the community. Motion on the floor, please. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that the reports from council authorities, boards, committees, and commission, ending June twenty-fourth, 2024, be received for information. It's a multiple.
Thank you very much. I'll call for the vote. Those in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you. And now we'll move on to the Chief Administrative Officer Report. CEO Williams?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. So on the screen, council has my updated action items, which was only one. And then that was a meeting with MLA Cooper coming out of the last meeting. It was due for this Thursday, but it got bumped until next week. So myself and Mayor Doll and what will be Deputy Mayor Daly will attend on July second to discuss a few issues: victim services, capital funding, and the like. Also on this action report is the potential jump park report, which is due by the end of the month. And I'll take a moment to go through what, what that process looked like. Just gonna open the screen here. Sorry, this mouse is finicky. So if you recall, a gentleman named Clint and a few other of his friends came to council several months ago to discuss a BMX jump park. This is a recreational facility where non-motorized pedal bikes partake in racing, jumping, and other tricks of the sort. It's a growing sport in Alberta. And Central Alberta has right now several parks dedicated to it, and Olds could potentially host one as well. So the only location that was deemed feasible was at Rotary Athletic Park, which is on the screen right now. We do own a fair amount of land, starting from our snow dump in the north. I shall not click on that, along the creek bed, which is more, less a utility right away for drainage, and this spot right here, which is our toboggan hill. We did meet with, sorry, we did correspond with several companies that build these parks. And we got a high-level estimate that we believe in the half a million dollar range would cost to construct one of these. The main issue right now is the absence of available land. So in this area where my cursor is going, it's about three acres. In addition, we would need to build this park, which we don't possess right now. But this location is, is ideal because there's already a hill there, which is required to start a jump park loop. It's close to a water source, which to maintain the jump park is, is essential. And then it's a close, it's adjacent to the roadway for emergency access services. So while it's not an immediate need or possibility, I believe that this location, if, if council is in agreeance with keeping an open mind towards, working towards there, to working towards, I guess, an addendum to Rotary Park, is something that we could see built there in the future. This oddly-shaped parcel of land is owned by a developer, Long Sky, which is a subsidiary of Springwood, which is, owns Cornerstone Developments. So Cornerstone did sell their commercial entity very recently, but still retain title to all the residential lands north of the Walmart Sobies Development. This ASP is probably in need of an update, given that it's now over a decade old. And, for example, the vistas and to the east and what we have done at Rotary Park may not totally align. So should the time come that this ASP be amended, we do take what's called municipal reserve allocation, which is a set formula in our statutory plans. And that could be how we obtain the additional three acres for further recreational needs, for example. But there's a lot more steps that have to occur until then. So, long story short, and I guess you should never end a long story by saying, "Long story short," but anyhow, I believe this, this park is doable here. More lands needed. And in the interim, if council is still in agreeance with keeping the conversation open, I will stay in touch with the group of gentlemen who are interested in seeing this progress and encourage them to, whether it be fundraise, form a society, to, to continue to gather community support. As the town, as it stands right now, won't be able to fund this. But if council deems it worthy, we could keep the idea alive by incorporating into our future plans for this Rotary Park area. I'll stop with that point. I do have a couple smaller things to go through, but in case there's any questions on my rant there.
No, I think that's very fair. And I, I, I believe we got quite a bit of positive feedback from them. My only question is, is would it still be on your plan to bring to council the possibility of fencing the area if it does go through?
Right. And that was, I also forgot, we met with the Rotary Club as well, who, who had general support for the, for the concept as well. And that was more of a, you know, process, good neighborly thing, as they went, obviously, they had a big hand in Rotary Park. To the fencing piece, yes, I do believe fencing would be required on this after what we've seen with other parks. So that would be incorporated into the cost of it.
So Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. And yeah, I certainly support keeping this, if not on the front burner, somewhere in the middle of the stove. Again, great idea. I recall the group was very passionate, very enthusiastic, very supportive. As you mentioned, funding for the town is a significant limitation, but this group was certainly keen to pursue other options. And the only other thing, and I didn't pay too much attention to it, just interesting how it would all fit together, I thought Innisfail recently was reported in the media. They were looking at some kind of a bike BMX facility. I could be mistaken, and I'm just wondering how that would kind of work together if both communities ended up pursuing this. But that's certainly down the line as well, so.
Correct. I did read that story as well. And it looks like it's a group very much in the exploratory phase. So I don't believe they have a spot designated or much further along than us. But I certainly, if that goes before we get anywhere, is we have to factor that into the, the overall regional needs. So. So I can finish off quickly here. Council has seen the 2024 financial report that administration put together. It is the first kick at the can, so to speak. We are hoping to both explain the financial statements in such a way that, that people who do not have a municipal background or finance background can understand, and then provide a bit more of a layman's explanation to the financial challenges. So welcome any feedback from council or from the public, certainly. And perhaps at your upcoming council, coffee with a counselor session this week, we could have some copies or perhaps even QR codes available. And any comments, solicitations you can do on behalf of that report would be appreciated. A lot of time and effort went into it, and, and hopefully, it's, it's worth people's while. Okay, so the last item, mentioned, I saw three ladies and a gentleman walk in the room here. I just want to take a moment to properly introduce to council and to the public our, our new economic development team. So with the partnership with Community Futures mentioned by Counselor Walsh in his report, we've been very fortunate to bring, bring on board two individuals through that grant program on a twenty-four-month contract basis. And through the NARED program, Northern and Rural Economic Development Program with, provincially, we've been able to second our good friend Gary Gedet for a twelve-month term. So I'm going to hand over to Sandra to speak a bit on what is happening.
There we go. Okay, so thank you all for coming to the event, those of you that were able to make it. I think it was quite a success. We've already had a number of calls coming in already, inquiring about the services and whatnot. But anyway, I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce you to our new business development advisor, Michelle McFadden. So Michelle comes to us with quite a bit of experience in business, running her own businesses, and she's worked with business pretty much her entire career. So she brings a wealth of information. And the services that were outlined at the event are some of the wonderful things that we're now going to be able to provide business that we weren't able to provide before. So the business retention piece of what we do is now expanded, as well as now the creation of business. So that whole entrepreneurship piece is growing and going to be a huge success with Michelle doing that. Ann as well, she has Ann Serrano. Her background is in marketing, digital marketing in particular, but she also comes to us with a background in finance as well as immigration. So there's a whole host of services and knowledge here that these two ladies bring, bring to us. And then, of course, we all know Gary, and Gary's joining the team. So Gary is going to be assisting us with the Next Generation Economy Initiative. So he's under a different grant. But Gary's going to be going out, meeting with local businesses as well, and helping us connect with them and promoting the services as well as the Brood Project. So lots going to be happening. But at the end of the day, these individuals came on board, had three weeks to pull together a service package, get a website page up, develop the promotional packages, and plan an event. And they pulled it off like it was unreal. So I'm very pleased with their services, and they're going to be a great part of my team.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. So with that, that concludes the open part of my C A report.
Williams and Counselor, or you've got Counselor and Deputy Mayor Blatt.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I'm through you to CEO Williams. I just wanted to pass on some kudos to Lorraine and her, and the Parks and Rec staff. I've had several compliments about the placement of the flower planters throughout town. And I think they look very good. And I just wanted to, to share those kudos, if I could, during this report.
Thank you for the kudos. I shall pass those along. And I, yeah, I should also note that the, the median along Highway twenty-seven, that is due for a pressure wash here soon to present, to prevent what we see as the miniature trees growing out of the crevices there. So hopefully getting that looking a little more slightly. And I should also, in the vein of kudos, because my wife tells me I have to give compliments to more people. Adrian and his team, as you've seen in his report, there's no shortage of information, and that's why it took so long. But the work that they've been doing here is not only immense and impressive and well-done, but long overdue. And I appreciate their efforts immensely. So they, from, from his team, April, to Kyle, to Melissa, to Public Works and Utilities, it's just been great to see that division doing that high level of work here for us. So given a couple more years, it will pay massive dividends. So well done to them.
I think the operations report was very detailed, and for some people, it's easy reading, like myself. It was much easier reading to have that detail, so kudos for sure. Any further comments? Well, thank you very much, CEO Williams. And I'd ask for a motion to accept report, please. Counselor Daly?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that the Chief Administrative Officer Report be accepted for information.
Thank you, Counselor Daly. I'll call for the vote. Those in favor? That is Carrie. Thank you very much. All right. I just have to find my agenda. And once again, thanks for all the great work. Welcome to the team. If you could close the door behind you, that'd be great. We will be moving into a closed portion of our agenda at this point. So when council goes into a closed session, please, for continued participation in the virtual council meeting, stay online in the live stream meeting platform. And the meeting stream will be replaced with a graphic. And when the graphic is removed, that will indicate the meeting is ready to reconvene. So thank you very much. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to move to close, please. Counsel Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I make the motion that council go into a closed session at three oh five P M. FOIP Section sixteen, disclosure harmful to business interests of a third party, Olds Fiber Limited Board, closed section, closed session, FOIP Section sixteen, again, disclosure harmful to business interests of a third party, the Olds Grizzlies. And the third item, closed session, FOIP Section sixteen, disclosure harmful to business interests of a third party, Mountain View Region Water Service Commission, with, I assume, all those in attendance remaining?
Thank you. Thank you. So we'll contact our legislative clerk at the time. All right. We have the information now. I'll call for the vote. All in favor? That is Carrie. Thank you. A five-minute break. Thank you.